All right, I'm gonna call this regular city commission meeting to order on Thursday, December 17th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to ask you all to rise and Dan Lovett's gonna lead us in prayer immediately after we'll be doing the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we ask you to be with us. You came to earth as a babe to share with us your love and teach us your ways. May we celebrate your birth with joy and love. May each of us in this community, on this commission and in our community be blessed. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote call, please.
Mayor Scott Carden.
Here.
Mr. Avery.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Lovett.
Here.
Mr. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
City Attorney Lovett.
Here.
We don't have any communications, so we've moved right on to the public comment portion of the meeting. If you'd like to address the commission, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to under, for you, two minutes. Typically, county commissioners, two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Let me know when the clock starts. Jackie, you time me. Good evening, my name is Bill Greathup, your county commissioner, and I live in Clay Township. The reason I'm here tonight is because it's the only meeting that I can make of your commission during the year. We both meet on the first and third Thursdays in December. In order to give us a longer stretch, we meet the first and the second Thursdays. You still meet on the third, so this is the only meeting that I get to come to. And I noticed that you do your financial report at this particular... How am I doing on time, Jackie? Okay. And seriously, I just wanted to stop by and wish you a Merry Christmas and to tell you that you're doing everything the right way. I'm really pleased to see what you're doing. The downtown section is absolutely wonderful. We went to a play just recently. This Saturday, I'm bringing the grandkids up, and we're going to see Miracle on 34th Street, spend a little time in town. We were here the other day, we were gonna stop, but we couldn't find a parking place, so we dove around the block twice, and then we found a place. So those are all good signs and good problems to have. So congratulations to everybody on what you're doing, and Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Seeing none, move on to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion and support and discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda has been approved. So we want a motion to approve the minutes from the December 3 regular city meeting.
Make a motion to approve the city commission regular meeting minutes of December 3, 2015.
Four seconds.
Support and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes have been approved. On to the consent agenda, we have item 8A, which is departmental activity reports, item 8B, which is Marine City Fire Authority Agenda Packet. We've got item 8C, which is business license for the Sweet Tooth relocation.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and place on file.
Motion, support.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Simpson.
I was hoping that we change the format of the police report. The old format had the address or general location of the incident. I was wondering if it was possible to re-include that in the future reports. I always found that helpful, just kind of figure out where things were. I know you're probably trying to save to a different format of paper, but I always found that helpful, if it'd be possible, if that would be something we could include, if it's not too much trouble.
Can I address a question? The reason we do that is, we took the addresses out just to save some embarrassment, maybe somebody didn't, doesn't mind people to know why the cops were there, so we retracted that off of there.
Understandable.
Just to kind of help the citizens out a little bit.
Sure, that's fine.
If you guys want them back, I'd be more than happy to put them back in for you.
Wasn't that big of a deal. I know it's just a change from what we used to, to the past couple ones, but I...
Understandable.
That makes perfect sense to me, so, thank you.
You know, I would just say that it was kind of informative to see, you know, where you were going, especially there was some hotspots in the past, and it, you know, kind of alerted us to maybe some situations, so, I mean, I would appreciate to see him in there again.
Or, maybe you could come up with some type of little map showing, I don't know, maybe there's some other way to do it without...
There is, with the system that we have, you can do a crime duty mapping that we can provide, and we'll try that this year.
Do you have something to add, Mr. Lovett?
I just agree with that concept, because you're right, I don't think we need to see everybody's names and who it is, because we don't know exactly why you're going to all of the places sometimes.
Well, I don't think their names were ever on there, were they?
Yes, well, sometimes they were.
Yeah, usually just the address and the officer that was at the scene is normally what was on there.
But I did have another comment. I just wanted to comment on the Sweet Tooth relocation. I had an opportunity today to have a little tour of what that's going to be and what it's gonna be like, and it's just gonna be awesome, you know, the change over there and what's happening to the Old Apple Core, it's just gonna be a great asset to downtown Marine City.
Anyone else? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Today, there ain't. Consent agenda has been approved. Now we are on to the audit presentation.
Good evening, city council, mayor. My name is Curtis McBride, and I'm a CPA for McBride, Manley &amp; Company. We are the CPA firm that audits the city of Marine City's books and records. I'm the managing partner for our firm, I've been with the partner for, with the firm for just over 15 years now. And I've been involved with the city of Marine City's audit since the first day I started with the firm, so I have a lot of experience with the city. Also with me this evening is Samantha Hudson. She is our senior auditor, and she's been with our firm for just over six years. And similar to me, she's also been involved with the city's audit since she started, so she has a lot of experience with the city's books and records. I am here this evening to present the results of your June 30, 2015 audit. Now, before I get into the actual slides, I just want to let you know that I handed out a physical copy of my presentation, if you want to follow along that way. The only thing I ask is that you do not distribute that to the general public, because that's only summarized information from our full report. It doesn't contain our audit opinion on it, so I don't want it taken out of context, so thank you in advance for that. Now, for the year end of June 30, 2015, our firm issued the city of Marine City what we call an unmodified or clean audit opinion. That's actually the highest audit opinion you can receive from an auditor. Now, that just simply means we're providing a favorable opinion on your financial statements, that we believe they are reliable and they're compliant with our accounting standards. It doesn't mean that we're providing any type of opinion on the financial health of the city, so I just want to clarify that. The first fund that I'm gonna talk about is the general fund. Now, the general fund primarily derives its revenues from property taxes and distributions from the state of Michigan for sales tax. Now, when looking at the balance sheet for the general fund, and the one thing I should tell you guys when I'm talking about your general fund, that's your capital projects fund and general fund combined. So, under our accounting standards, we have to consolidate those two funds, so that's what I'm talking about here. When I get to the fund balance level, I'll tell you which portion of that really relates to your internal general fund, and how much of that relates to your capital project, so you can kind of gauge it that way. Now, looking at the general fund at the end of June 30, 2015, you can see you had about $929,000 of cash on hand, you had another $44,000 in restricted cash. That was, you actually had money on deposit for the rental rehab program for the Snug Theater at the end of June 30, 2015, so that really wasn't your cash that you can use for operating expenses, so that's why it's restricted cash. You had about $107,000 due from other units of government. $85,000 of that was actually for state revenue sharing for the months of May and June of 2015 that you didn't receive until July and August of 2015. And another $23,000 of that was actually St. Clair County Parks and Rec Village that you received after June 30, 2015. So the general fund finished the year with total assets of about $1,246,000. You had obligations against those assets of about $334,000, and finished the year with an ending fund balance of about $912,000. Now, $45,000 of that is your capital projects fund balance, and the other $867,000 is your general fund balance. Now, to put that into perspective, the state of Michigan Treasury Department recommends that at a minimum, your general fund balance be at about 10% of your annual expenditures. At the end of June 30, 2015, you were sitting at about 34%, so you were in excess of the recommended minimum, but I certainly would not go so far as to say that you had an excessive fund balance. I think it's pretty much right where it should be, and I certainly wouldn't make sure that it falls any lower than its current level. That 10% is a minimum level. So once you start approaching that 10%, you really need to start taking steps to make sure you're increasing and building that fund balance back up. Now, this next slide is the income statement for the general fund. Now here, we're comparing 2014 to 2015. I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail as far as the sources of revenues and the expenditure types in subsequent slides, so I just want to give a general overview here. So in 2014, you can see the general fund generated about $3,230,000 in revenue, and that number came down to about $2,756,000 for 2015. Looking at expenditures, you can see the general fund spent about $3,850,000 in 2014, and only spent about $2,674,000 in 2015. So you can see, for 2015, the general fund had an increase to its fund balance of about $82,000. That's a little bit deceptive because of the timing of your state revenue sharing payments during 2015, so you basically received an extra $70,000 during the year that you're not normally gonna have all the time. So, really, when you take that out, the general fund had about a $12,000 increase to its fund balance, so it was basically at break even for 2015. Now, this next slide, we're looking at the general fund revenues by sources, again comparing 2014 to 2015. You can see that your property taxes went from about $1,506,000 in 2014 down to about $1,459,000 in 2015. So you had a slight loss in property tax revenues between the two years. You can see that licenses, permits, fines, and fees actually went down quite a bit, too. Went from $336,000 down to $175,000. That's actually a combination of a lot of unusual things. In 2014, you received about $52,000 in insurance proceeds on a police vehicle. You also had a decrease of about $60,000 in your salvage inspection fees between 2014 and 2015, and your administrative charges between the general fund and the TIFAs actually went down by about $32,000 during the year. That number is actually based on the tax revenues that your TIFAs capture in a given year. Basically, there's a cap placed on that, so you would expect that number to fluctuate quite a bit. And basically, that cap was put into place so you don't run into a situation where your Tifa funds are collecting less in taxes than what they're actually paying over to the general fund for administrative costs. So that explains that primary difference there. One of the other major differences is in refus and other, so you can see that went from about $668,000 in 2014 down to about $474,000 in 2015. Now, the refus or garbage collection actually stayed pretty consistent between the two years, but what we have in other revenues was actually grant revenues. So in 2014, you received about $200,000 more in the rental rehab grant program than you did in 2015. So that explains that difference. So 2014, the general fund generated just over $3 million during the year, and for 2015, it generated about $2,756,000 during the year. Looking at the general fund expenditures by type, again comparing 2014 to 2015. Now, looking at the top item here, salaries, you can see salaries for the general fund actually went from $925,000 down to $822,000 in 2015. So you had almost a $100,000 decrease in total salaries expense in the general fund. That was primarily in the DPW and police departments, that was the majority of the decrease there. You also had, ironically, if you look at payroll taxes and benefits, those went up a little bit. That went from $287,000 in 2014 to $302,000 in 2015, and that's because you actually contributed an extra $33,000 to pension in 2015. And that's actually actuarially determined, so that is also gonna fluctuate year to year. One other major change, you can see repairs and maintenance, went from about $97,000 in 2014, and actually went down to $49,000 in 2015. That's because in 2014, you spent about $30,000 in tree trimming throughout the city, and you didn't have that in 2015. And the other major change was in what we call other expenditures. That went from about $367,000 in 2014 to about $177,000 in 2015. Now, what we have in other expenditures is actually the rental rehab expenditures related to those grants. So the way that that program works is, the city basically receives a rental rehab grant, but it's being spent for private businesses, so you're also spending, you're spending that out. So it would make sense that if in 2014, you had $200,000 more in rental rehab grant revenues, you would also would have had $200,000 more in rental rehab expenditures in 2014. So that explains that $200,000 decrease between 2014 and 2015. So you can see in 2014, the general fund spent about $3,850,000, and it spent about $2,674,000 for 2015. This is the five-year historical revenue and expenditure trend for the general fund. You can see we're going all the way back to 2011 here. So starting with the revenues on the left, you can see that the general fund actually generated $3,920,000 in revenues for 2011, and that number's come all the way down to about $2,756,000 for 2015. So that's about a $336,000 loss in general fund revenues over that period of time. And if we look at that in a little bit more depth, most of that's actually property taxes. $320,000 of that loss is related to property taxes. So you generated about $1,778,000 in property taxes in 2011, and that came all the way down to about $1,458,000 for 2015. There's a few factors that went into that, and this is a situation that's not unique to the city of Marine City. So basically, when you have a situation where you have a decline in the economy like we had, a recession for a couple of years, and you had such a decline in property values in such a short period of time, that combined with the constitutional limitations that we have on property taxes, such as proposal A, which limits property taxes on individual properties, and the Headley Amendment, which limits the city as a whole. So basically, those two constitutional limitations puts caps on the property tax levels. So even when the general economy is improving, the property values and the property taxes associated with them are increasing at a much slower rate, so it's gonna take a long time to get those property tax levels back to what they were prior to that recession. So that's what you've been experiencing the last several years. Now, looking at the expenditures on the right, again going back to 2011, you can see the general fund spent just over $3,930,000 in 2011, and that number's come all the way down to $2,674,000 for 2015. So that's about a $419,000 cut in general fund expenditures over that period of time. And of course, that's because you guys had anticipated that loss primarily in property tax revenues, and you budgeted accordingly. This next slide is the five-year historical fund balance trend for the general fund, again going back to 2011. So the good news is that even though you've had that major decrease in your primary revenue source in the general fund, you've been able to maintain your fund balance here. So you can see going back to 2011, your fund balance is sitting at about $799,000, and it currently sits at about $912,000 at the end of 2015. So you've done a great job at managing that situation. The next two funds I want to talk about briefly are the major and local street funds. Now, these funds are a little bit different than the general fund. These are what we call special revenue funds. They become special revenue funds because their revenue sources and their assets are restricted for what we call a specific or a special purpose. And that special purpose is for the maintenance and construction of major and local streets. The revenues cannot be used for any other, for any other purpose, can't use these for general operating expenditures. So looking at the balance sheet here, starting with the local street fund, you can see the local street fund finished the year with about $165,000 in total assets, had total liabilities against those assets of about $19,000, and finished the year with a fund balance of about $146,000. Now, that fund balance level is actually in excess of 100% of the expenditures in that fund, so the local street fund has a healthy fund balance. Moving over to the major street fund, you can see that it had, finished the year with total assets of about $295,000, had liabilities against those assets of about $17,000, and finished the year with an ending fund balance of about $277,000. And that's also more than 100% of the annual expenditures in that fund. So both of these funds have very healthy fund balances. Now, the one thing to note about these two funds is that it's typical for their fund balance levels to fluctuate drastically from year to year, depending on what type of construction projects you have going on. So in years where you have a lot of street projects, you're gonna dip into the fund balance, and in years, obviously, where you don't have them, you're gonna be building those fund balance levels back up. So the important thing to remember is that you have to monitor that fund balance level, and once it starts approaching that 10% threshold, you really need to put a stop on the spending to build that fund balance back up again, to make sure, you know, in anticipation of future construction projects. You guys have done a great job at doing that historically. This is the income statement for those two funds. So the local street fund generated about $95,000 in total revenues, primarily from distributions from the state of Michigan, had total expenditures of about $139,000 during the year, and used about $6,500 of its fund balance during the year. Now, the major street fund generated about $227,000 during the year in total revenues, spent about $138,000, and actually had an increase to its fund balance of about $150,000. The last fund I want to talk about is the water and sewer fund. Now, this fund is different than the street funds and the general fund in that we refer to it as a proprietary fund or an enterprise fund. Now, we call it a proprietary fund because it generates its revenues from user charges. So the water and sewer system charges the city residents for the use of those systems, and in theory, the fund is supposed to be self-sustaining through those user charges. So that's why we call it a proprietary fund, and we account for it similar to that of a for-profit or private business. Now, looking at the balance sheet here, you can see that there is a, the primary asset here in this fund is in a category of non-current assets called capital assets. So capital assets are actually the water and sewer systems themselves, and all the major assets and equipment associated with the plants. So it would make sense in this fund that that would be your primary asset. We call it a non-current asset because these are assets that are not easily converted into cash. So you can't, you can't pay bills with equipment in the water and sewer plants, not easily converted to cash. So you had about $6.5 million tied up in capital assets out of total assets of about $7.1 or $7.2 million. You had obligations against those assets in this fund of about $2.4 million, and that's primarily from three bonds you had outstanding at the end of 2015, and those amounted to $2,015,000 at the end of the year, and the last one matures in 2026. So looking at the net position, which is actually the equity for this fund, you can see we have three components here, but the component that you really need to focus on is what we call the unrestricted net position. So basically, that's the net position that's not tied into those capital assets that I was just talking about. So the unrestricted net position is the net position that you have available to pay operating expenses. It's equivalent to the general fund balance, if you will. So that currently sits at about $360,000, or about 20% of operating expenses. Now, the state of Michigan does not have a recommended minimum unrestricted net position for this fund, but I think you guys are pretty much, in my opinion, as low as you want to go here. I don't think you want to use any more net position in this fund. And I think, you know, you just want to make sure that, you know, as you have, pass water and sewer rates, you just make sure that you're at least keeping, at a minimum, keeping up with the rate of inflation. This is the income statement for that fund. You can see the water and sewer fund generated about $1,594,000 in total revenues, primarily from metered sales, so those are the user charges I was talking about. You generate another $113,000 from your sewer contract with Cotterville Township, and so you generated $1,594,000 in revenues. You spent about $1.8 million in operating expenses, and had other miscellaneous revenues and expenses, and used about $119,000 of your net position in this fund during the This is something I really wanted to talk about this year, I threw this slide in here. This is your retirees' healthcare. Now, this is what we call the schedule of funding progress, and this actually comes from your actuary. Now, this is as of the most current actuary report, which is, believe it or not, is all the way back from 2012. Now, the city of Marine City is a small community, so they're only required to have a retirees' healthcare actuarial report every third year. So you're gonna have one dated June 30, 2015, but it's always one year behind. So I'm anticipating you're gonna have that sometime in the summer of 2016. So the column that you really want to focus on here is the fourth from the left, that's the unfunded AAL. That stands for the Unfunded Actuarially Accrued Liability. So basically, this means, what they're saying is, your retirees' healthcare is underfunded by about $7.5 or $7.6 million as of 2012. This is gonna be updated, of course, pretty soon. So you're about 3.1% funded in retirees' healthcare. Now, this is much different than your pension. Now, under state law, you are required to contribute to your pension on an actuarially determined basis, so your actuary comes up with a contribution you have to make every year, and by state law, you have to make that contribution, and you guys do that, you've done that every year. Retirees' healthcare is different. There is no similar rule for retirees' healthcare. Most communities elect to contribute to it on what we call a pay-as-you-go basis, and that's what the city has elected to do. Most communities do this. So basically, what you do is, you look in your general fund, and when you go through the budget process, you determine how much you have available in your general fund to contribute to retirees' healthcare, and that's what you do. Really quickly, I want to describe our audit process to you. Our audits perform in all the major accounting functions, and I listed some of them here. So we're looking at purchases, cash receipts, utility billing, adjusting journal entries, payroll, and bank reconciliations. So we're actually looking at transactions, we're testing internal controls, we're making sure that your accounting processes are appropriate, and that there are appropriate internal controls in place. We're also putting together that financial statement report that you have sitting in front of you that's been bound. And year-end reconciliations are performed, prepare the financial statements, of course. In a typical year, our firm spends about 400 to 450 hours on the city of Marine City. Obviously, a big portion of that is on the actual financial statement audit, but we also provide other services. You know, we're involved in a lot of research projects throughout the year, consulting services, we're involved in a rate study with Cotterville Township. And so really, our audit is an ongoing process throughout the year. It's not something where we just come in a couple of years after the year is over and start looking at the transactions. We're actually doing that throughout the year. And Mary Ellen's always been very good at contacting us, you know, letting us know what's going on throughout the year. We're also following board minutes. We actually look at, at a minimum, we read all of your board minutes, you know, every month. We usually try to do that throughout the year instead of before the year's over, so we can identify any potential issues throughout the year. So, you know, from our perspective, it's been a very good relationship. You know, I'd rather have communication throughout the year than when the year's over. You know, that really helps us identify any potential problems or risks as the year's going on, and that prevents surprises after the year's over. So your entire accounting department, Mary Ellen, you know, they really should be commended on that. They've done a great job. I know in my 15 years, that's been the case, and even with my short experience with Elaine, I've been in contact with her several times, too. So it's a great working relationship. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions for me?
It looks like it. Thanks a lot.
Okay. You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to go into a five-minute recess.
All right.
Motion, support. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, take a break. Okay, the recess has ended, I'm calling this meeting back into order at time. Anybody see it?
Eight thirty-four.
Eight thirty-four. Seven thirty-four. Seven thirty-four. Boy, time flies.
It's an hour later.
Hey, I asked for help, that's what I get. It's the kind, that's the kind of information I get. Moving on to item 10A, which is the SAW grant update. Who's gonna do that?
I didn't bring it with you.
Oh.
All right, all right, I'll cover.
Give us the highlights.
Yeah, yeah, I'll give you the highlights. Tetra Tech's been working with Mike Hitterich on the SAW grant, and you guys asked for an update, so he did put something together just to let everybody know the status and where he's at with it. They did go out and do an inventory of the manholes, they mapped them. If you do an inventory of the manholes. They mapped them. If you want a map, I'll provide one with you, a small map. I couldn't really do in the packet and actually make it legible. You can also see they provided a spreadsheet that shows the mapped locations and conditions and materials of all of those manholes. Most of them are rated average, I guess. The ones that don't have a rating number are either rated a one or two, which means that 20 years or more life. And then there's maybe two that are rated a five and are something that probably should be taken care of as soon as possible.
Who takes care of it?
Mike.
If we give him enough money.
There's only two that are, are rated a five, and according to what he's put together here, that's, that they have failed or about to fail, and that they should be addressed.
And that's the purpose of that ready-to-serv fees. We could use some of that funding to take care of that, that we've been collecting this fiscal year, as needed, depending on the cost. And Mike knows that. Him and I work closely together, so if he costs that out, he'll come to me, and I'll tell him if the funding is there.
Very good.
And then they still owe us some, or any, yet?
Yes. Yeah. Sorry, at the bottom of that report, is the item still to be completed for the, the SAW grant work?
Do we have any estimate on when that will be done?
It's to be done by June of seventeen.
Seventeen, I believe, yeah.
June seventeen, it's to be done by...
All right. Does anybody else got any questions on the SAW grant update? Moving on to item 11A, which is board appointments.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to put Bob Eadie on the board review.
Support.
Got motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bob Eadie's on the board review. Next would be the zoning board of appeals. We have one vacancy, and we have an application from Gary Gabler.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Gary Gabler to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Motion to support. Any discussion on Mr. Gabler's application? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gabler is now on the zoning board of appeals. Historical commission has two vacancies, and we have one application from Tim Turner.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Kim Turner to the historical commission.
Support.
Got motion to support. Any discussion?
What, what should, this is just the renewal?
It's just a renewal.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Kim, for applying, for re-upping. And then we've got four vacancies on the dangerous building board of appeals and no applicants, so.
You know, I was listening in the office, and that's, hopefully, we can get some people because there are some buildings that need to be addressed.
I do have one person that's volunteered, and he has an extensive construction background, so I'll give him an application. I'll get it to him, and...
What are the other two? Isn't there...
Uh, they're looking for a builder, and they're looking for...
Engineer.
An engineer.
And then the others are just anybody?
Just anybody.
Until we get this board, we can address the issues that they have on some of the buildings in town.
All right. Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I did try, but I got a letter from our attorney because it'd be a conflict of interest, because I can't be on the commissioner and also be on the dangerous building, the board. It's a conflict of interest, so I tried.
All right. Anything else on the boards and appointments? I don't think so. So moving on to item 11B, which is the water distribution system.
Well, this is a wonderful report that Mike put together for everyone regarding all the water main and infrastructure systems.
Let you come up to the podium, Mike.
You want to do it? Okay.
It's like I'm saying, telling you, this is just information only. This is the condition of mains, how old they are, what streets are affected, and so we know what we're dealing with when we pick a street to pave it, what's underneath the road on that part of it that we need to take care of. So this is basically information of what's on, I mean, you need every street in town, and how old they are.
That's all good to know. Commissioner Simpson?
I think there's more of a, just a note on everything for people at home or falling around. It absolutely astonishes me that more than 52% of our system was built 1950 or earlier. It's absolutely, like, well beyond its life capacity. So as we're, we were talking through budgets last year, we knew how bad it was, but to see that actual number of, of total percentage, and maybe some even more, because the next one is 1951 through '70, and I would imagine a lot of that was probably closer to 1951. So a tremendous amount of our system is, is obscenely old, and it's just amazing that we've been able to, you know, work hard to keep any semblance of a system going that long. I mean, just, it's amazing to me.
Your cost, a lot of it, when, when we started redoing these, we placed these four and two-inch mains. They require us to put six in minimum out in the ground. So that's going to be, that's going to be a cost.
How many of these date back to the 1800s?
We got about 8,000 feet of 1937.
Yeah. We don't have any oak pipe down there, do we?
Once in a while, we come across them, and then we cap them off. But, no, that's, that's about it.
Did you have a question? Who's on it?
No, I just, I think this is a very important document, and I would wish and hope that this could be put onto the website because I think some of the people in this community need to see the streets that, that are that old and the mains that are that old, and what Mike went through last year in the DPW and trying to keep up with water mains and breakage, and why we have been asking for the PA 33, that we could have some money to begin doing some of this infrastructure work. And, you know, your street may very well be the, the one that has this, and I really think you should see it. I mean, I, you know, over, more than half of the infrastructure in this city is ancient. It is not going to last, and we need to be proactive and do something about it.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of iron pipe out there, too.
Yeah. I wanted to ask, were you able to take any kind of filming inside the piping?
Oh, no, we can't go inside of water mains. They're...
It's got full of water.
They're full of water.
No, I mean, you got cameras that are, you know, like, I'm thinking like sewer cameras, you know?
For the water mains?
For water mains, but you can't, you can't associate...
No, they're under pressure. We can't, we can't throw a camera in the water main without shutting down the system. And then we have very few valves in town. If I shut down suction the main, I might shut off downtown and half of Marcus Street. I can't do that, telephysically one of them.
Then you'd have to flush it and re-sanitize boil water, right?
Exactly. I just can't, I just can't...
I just wondered, like, I, you know, you're saying that the age of it, but then sometimes a visual, you know, I don't know if there's no way of taking any kind of visual or any kind of...
We can dig them up. You can take a look at them.
No, no, you know what I'm saying is, like, if, if you see a potential problem, like, say, one of main breaks, you look at the general piping around it and see how much deteriorating of it.
Last year, we had 40, 42 main breaks the year before, and most of those were on Marcus Street, and the streets that the mains are three feet deep. The mains are, they look terrible when we dig them up. They're full of rust and scale, and I don't know what you asked me to tell you or show you. If you want to see one, when I dig one up, you can come by and take a look at it.
Well, I just, because, you know, a lot of times, people say the old-fashioned things were built better and sturdier and one thing or another, but that's a fallacy. In other words, it's not true. Good old plastic is...
You got something in the ground that's been in there for 50 years, 50, 60 years. I mean, the earth, the soil, the, the acid in the ground is taking care of those mains. They, they actually rot the mains.
Okay, so it's, you're saying, okay, because of the acid in the ground, that's contributed to it. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
I just want clarification.
Commissioner Simpson?
There's a handful of them, particularly, I started to notice this because of the one near me. Listen, the pipe material is plastic?
Yes.
A two-inch plastic. Is that a more modern, or is that something that was kind of put in, like, a bit substandard? Just because it's so different and smaller, I was curious. Is that a concern, or is that a modernization?
It's a concern on the, the older plastic, like, what goes on your street, because back in the 70s, when they installed that plastic, it's a very thin-walled plastic, and it's, you get a rock next to it, and three years, it rubs right through it. Now they go with, we have a blue poly they use that has probably about a good half-inch wall on it that is unbelievable. It's really good.
So the handful that are in there is, would be as, as terrible as you might think?
Right, but we can't, we can't put the two-inch back in the ground anymore. That's...
I mean, the plastic particularly?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Just kind of one correction. The P-33 is strictly for police and fire. Those new user fees is what we're going to use to repair this. So just a clarification.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes, the P-33 was for police and fire, and the monies then that we would not be giving to police and fire would go into the general fund.
All right. Okay. I think we had enough on this. Thanks a lot, Mike, for the excellent work. You know, we've been sitting here for a little while now, and this is the first time we've seen anything like this, so it's a test meant to the job you're doing, and we appreciate it. Moving on, moving on to financial business. We got item 12A, which is budget amendments.
Okay, um, please, I'm here, I provided you a, like, one-page document, smaller print. This was kind of convincing what we had there into more of a better document for you to look at. And what I was asking, would like to know, is would you prefer to see it that way versus what was in your package?
You're talking this versus this?
Yes.
I like seeing comparison.
I think either one is serviceable. I don't really have an opinion.
It's just for the future budget amendments. I would know which format to use. That's the only reason I was asking that question. So, I mean, probably the next budget amendments aren't going to be until June, so if you guys could just, like, email me and say which way you like it better, or make a decision now, just so I know for the next group of budget amendments.
I love the one-page. It's much easier to...
Me, too.
Okay. Well, then, Malon will, will provide it that way. Elaine had a request to have this into a one-page document, and then she took the information I did and then formatted it into the one-page. So I will do that in the future. The, so with that being said, we'll move on to the budget amendments. Now, these budget amendments were required because it was decided that we would not pursue the P-33. So then, as a result of that, we had to do some major changes to our current budget because it included that. And if, when you review these budget amendments, you will notice that the majority of the reduction was taken from the police department, which, when we get into that, I will discuss how that was accomplished. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was with the police department, with it being done like that, you, you have to understand is, is that because they've reduced this, there's also a loss of service that's being provided to the residents. We would not, there would still only be one patrolman on duty at all time. Right now, we also do not have a, prior in the budget, there was a police chief, there was Lieutenant Heslop, and then there was a sergeant. In the office was a police chief, a lieutenant, and then a patrolman on the road for coverage, okay? Right now, what they have is, is just one-man coverage during all of this. Now, from eight to four, when Lieutenant Heslop is in the, well, acting police chief, I'm sorry, acting police chief Heslop is in the office, you have him there, but that's only during eight, eight to four. After that, you just have one officer. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'll get more into detail when we get into the police department. So the very first, we'll do the revenues, is the P-33. I had to actually remove that out of there. The city actually had, like, a little windfall, and the only reason we did not include this in the budget process is because these were funds that were coming from the state, and you, there was no guarantee that we were going to get these funds. When they changed that personal property tax law, where any, if they, if a business submits a form and show, and they have to do that annually, and if they don't, then they do not get this, anything, they do not get taxed on anything under $40,000. Okay? So what the state did is said that we will make up that loss of tax revenue. And, and I'm not saying it was $40,000, but they base it on your values that is provided to them from the equalization director Greg Hill from the county. This actually was for two years. So if we continue into the budget for the 16, 17-year, we're only going to be able to include about $18,000 in revenue for this. So we had an additional, like, $20,000 more because we have in here 14 and 15, and we actually have received this money. That's the reason I put it in here. If we had not received this money, I would have not included it in there, but we did. We also received, we're going to be receiving a grant for the touch-print live-scanned fingerprinting device, which, if you look at the expenditures in the police department, you'll show that it's also shown there as an expenditure, and this is a revenue coming in. And then the, one of the reductions in capital improvement in the police department was they were removing the patrol car. We had calculated $2,500 in revenue for the sale of the patrol car that they were replacing, so I had to take that away because that was no longer revenue. So based on just these particular revenues, this isn't the total revenues, you know, we have, we see a reduction of $215,924 in the revenues. Getting to now, we'll go on to the expenditures. In the city manager, we budgeted $9,025 for healthcare. The current city manager is not receiving any healthcare, so we were able to reduce that expenditure from there. Then in buildings and grounds, we were able to keep, if you look, all the capital improvement projects, we kept all the capital improvement projects in there. The only one I took off of there is remove, rework gateway service for $5,200. That isn't necessary, that we needed that in there, so we just removed that out of there. So with that, we're still going to keep in there for capital improvement projects, the file server for the city offices, the museum exterior maintenance, the 300 Broadway annual, any type of expenditures that they need there for improvements that's required just to do an annual maintenance, and then the guy center exterior. Moving on to the police department. We were, we had to increase because our police chief was part-time, and the acting police is, is full-time. We, what we did is we moved, we had to add an additional $4,730 in there because with the POAM contract, the acting police chief receives an additional compensation, and they did not replace the lieutenant. So all they have right now is the acting police chief, and he gets 10% additional added on to his salary as a lieutenant for that. So that's to cover that. Part-time wages, we reduced the part-time wages because, like I discussed earlier, is we moved the 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM shift, and then with the police chief resigning, we were able to cut those wages down due to that. Then because of those two changes, then we see a reduction in the employer cost for your FICA. That was shown there. Employment screening, because there isn't, they're not expecting to hire as many part-timers we would necessarily need where we do the employment screening. And this is a, a lot of this, I want to commend Mr. Acting Police Chief Heslop because he, a lot of the numbers came from him. I did not do them. That was him. He reviewed his budget. So you have to, I would suggest we commend him because a lot of this is due to his work in reviewing his budget. Fuel, we're able to cut that by $5,000, again, with the police chief resignation. You know, that did cut back on fuel costs there. What I did on this, because when you look at it and you, and you remember we did this in another budget year, is we used to have those wages, you know, that separation of wages that were in the police department. That's really not a cost to operate a police department because whether we were to use the police department here or use it somewhere else, we'd still have to have that in our budget, and I moved it to special projects. The same thing... The same thing falls with the salvage vehicle inspection fees. It's really should be, I moved it to special projects because it's really not part of the police department operating. So I moved it. The revenue is still there, but the expenditure is being taken out of the police department budget. Dues and memberships was reduced. Again, I believe it's because of the police chief resigning, and there isn't as many dues that we'll have to pay out because all we have is just one. Before, it was always a lieutenant and the police chief. Well, now that we don't have a police chief, we just have the lieutenant, or acting police chief, sorry. I keep saying that. That's all I've ever thought. The lodging is reduced because no longer is, and we had already decided that, that we weren't going to be having the, at that time, Lieutenant Heslop going to the staff and command school, but also you have to note is we were using salvage vehicle designation funds to pay for that. So you'll see where that comes off later on into when we get towards the end of this. Meals, again, was because of the lieutenant school being removed as well as the training tuition. Then, under capital outlay, the patrol car was removed. But ultimately, the only cost too, that we were using general fund operating was 12,000, it was $12,500 because we were using salvage vehicle money and also drug forfeiture money, and then there was the sale of the car, which I took out of there. The four portable police radios have also been removed, and also the additional funds that were in there for that live-scan digital fingerprinting, that, it had 12,000, we're only needing 8,000, and again, that 8,000 that's in there is actually being funded by a grant. So again, no general fund operating money is being used for that. So what's left in there is the computers for $2,500 and the touch-print live-scan fingerprinting device, which is being funded by grant funds. So the only portion of their capital improvement that came from this was just for the computers. Under Parks and Beach, we budgeted 39,000, and we reduced it by 13,000. And what we're going to, and where it was, it was reducing the LED lights cost for the lamp posts along waters, along the water on the South Water Street there, along the walkway. So I talked to Mike, and Mike said he needed $6,000 for that, and then the other is the lighthouse interior repairs of 20,000. But again, this is not money coming from general operating tax revenue, it's coming from the Parks and Recreation millage money. Lastly, is the salvage vehicle inspection fees, which I had already discussed with you, I moved it to special projects. So when you look at the, what the projected budget, amended budget revenue is, is $2,711,225. The projected amended budget expenditures is $2,745,850. Then, from there, we are using $26,710 from the restricted and designative funds for Parks and for improvements, which is your recreation millage funds, and we're using county road tax millage that is being used, that's going to be transferred to the street funds. The money, on your winter taxes, there's a county road tax millage that comes into general fund, and the reason we put it there was is because we weren't sure that the designation of whether we want to use it for major or local, so we put it in there, and then we budget it, when we budget it, then it gets transferred at that point. So as a result, the net of revenues over appropriations is $435. Our estimated year-end fund balance at June 30th, 2016, is $648,934. So there was just a slight increase in that. That takes care of general fund, and then the drug forfeiture fund is we remove the contribution for the patrol car because they're no longer purchasing that, so I took it out of the budget as a result there. And do you have any questions on any of this?
Unfortunately, I got a whole list. I do want to commend the chief for this budget. You did a really good job in taking this apart. But I got a lot of questions here. First, the sale of the police car. I don't remember that we ever saw it or we approved the sale. I know it's gone.
This, you're talking about that, $2,500?
The police car.
There is, there hasn't been a sale of the police car. This was what we had budgeted in there as revenue coming in.
Did we get rid of a car?
We sold the old Dodge Charger, which we obtained seal for.
When was that gone? Do you remember?
Four or five months ago, maybe.
Yeah. That's what I'm talking about. That didn't come through us for approval. Anyway, I'll move on.
We discussed that today, that, we were discussing it with the DPW director on the sale of equipment, that historically, we haven't brought it before the board, because I did question that today, and Chris reviewed it as well, and we just, we look back, and we've never brought like sale.
John brought some of them for, the stuff that's for sale here that we approved.
Like, when they did their major auction over at DPW, and none of that came over that, and we took quite a bit of revenue in for that.
But it should. That's all I'm pointing out.
Well, I mean, you would have to direct us as a board if you would like us to do that in the future.
All right. I want to go on to the next thing. One thing I noticed that I don't see in here is in the city manager's budget. Sorry for all the pages, but I had to go through this on short notice. All right. Our current budget for the city manager shows, I know you took the insurance out, and that's fine, but the wages have not been corrected because it still says we only have 49,870. So I went back and looked at what the contract states. We hired a new city manager at 65,000, starting on August 24th, so that's about a month, seven weeks into the budget year. And we were also paying the interim city manager 2,000 a month for at least three months that I know of. So after I did all the calculations, I figured the salary should have been closer to 79.5, but we still have 49.8. That would also adjust for FICA life insurance because I don't know if it's the same as what John got, the, what she gets for the 401K, and so all those things. I didn't see that in the city manager's.
Well, I didn't go through each department, you know, because you never know of some upcoming changes or something. What I did is I picked out the highlights, and that's what I've always done. I haven't gone through and physically gone through everybody's budget, and the only reason I didn't touch the full-time wages is because of the interim, or the acting city manager salary in there, so I wasn't going to touch it. Bottom line is the bottom line number there. And I knew I definitely could take out the healthcare because we haven't had any expenditures, and there is not, was not offered to her. I mean, I'm not changing any of the procedures that I've done in all the years that I've worked here.
Well, I understand that, but my concern is that we're going to be like 30,000 short, okay? Based on what we have, 50,000.
But her salary doesn't just come out of city manager's salary. It's split between here and water and sewer.
Well, but I don't know if any of that's been taken care of. That's my concern.
I do it, yes. It is taken care of. I do that every pay period.
So you calculated hers in with his and all that?
Yeah. It doesn't change when you hire a new city manager. The allocation table is going to stay the same.
Well, I'd need to see it on, on some of the stuff because, you know, I don't know, you know, it's always buried in the book. That's always been the problem.
Well, the problem is, is because you can't do it any other way. I have to allocate it, basically, because if I charged it off to hers, how is water and sewer going to ever give them the money back to it?
So can you, can you give me a breakdown of how it's split up then, later on, afterward?
You're talking, you want to know how her wage is split up between the two?
Hers and how Don's was.
Sure.
You know, you don't have to do it now, but later. Okay. Next thing. The 2% raises were figured in. Now, the three full-time officers at the PD get the raise because it's in their contract. DPW doesn't get the raise, but Don had figured in 2% raises, were those removed?
Okay, DPW never had a raise in there.
I know. I'm saying, they don't get it.
And.
But I calculated in for the old office staff and everything else, that was, part of the P-33 issue was, the raises wouldn't be in there unless they got the P-33. If that came out, the 2% raises were removed.
Right. Okay, again, it's, if you were to look at what wages, the difference in the wages, it's not a huge amount, and I would, if this was going to be brought up, I was going to tell you as a board, then if you don't want anybody to get those raises, say you don't want anybody to get those raises, and it won't happen. But you'd have to vote on that as a board. And I'm not going to change the salaries on all of these because it's so minimal that it's not worth the extra work to do that.
Here's the issue, though. This is part of the P-33. If you look at the motion, all that was included in there, and so I'm just bringing up the issues, all right? The next one I have is, I know we had a person leave on your staff, and we had a payout. I don't see that. Then we hired two people, a full-time and a part-time, and I have no idea what those benefits and pay, if that all equals out the same.
Okay. First off, I hired at lower rate. Second of all, that part-time person is actually taking up some of the, we had several people in her office that were part-time that will not be there. And as far as compensation, it's, since it's a lower rate and the payout, it's not, it's not going to adjust anything. I wasn't going to do any changes because in the long run, I don't think it's going to make any difference when it comes down to it.
We still have to calculate their payout. I know it's not a big payout, but it's still there.
It wasn't. So that's why with reduction in their wages, they are not making as much as what the previous employee was.
I know, but we don't know that. I don't know what they're making. I've never seen the information on it.
Okay, so then, I'm telling you that right now, and if I felt that it needed to be addressed, I would have put it in here.
But my concern is, I got to figure out a budget, and I don't know where it's at. I don't know who we hired, how much we hired them for, what we're paying them. Okay.
Well, that again, is not supposed to be your responsibility. If you look at the charter, that's department heads' responsibility.
Well, that's fine, but if I don't see it in here, how am I going to know?
Then you have to trust me. The auditor's just mentioned about how well things are.
I'm not saying I don't trust you, but I'm trying to figure out where we are in a budget, okay? Next one. You got in here that you're going to get rid of the gateway file server, but if I looked in the sheet, that was 3,050 from general fund and 50 from water sewer. Is that how you took it out?
The gateway server.
The whole three, yeah, it was 3,000.
I, there was, there was $1,500 in there for the gateway server.
One was 1,500 from the general fund and 15 from water sewer. I pulled the sheet. So you removed 1,500 from one, did the 1,500 come out of the other account?
Again, it's so minor, I'm not going to change something for 1,500 dollars.
I'm just asking the question.
Okay, and I'm just explaining.
So you took it out of the building grounds, but you didn't take it out of the other account?
I did not take it out of water and sewer now.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
For 1,500 dollars.
I noticed that, and I know this isn't anything for her, the last two years, the lifeguard ad keeps going in the newspaper. It was in there again, even though we're not hiring lifeguards, so I don't know.
We are for the pool. She has swim programs.
The rec program at the ice cream. Okay, all right. So she is hiring, so it is for what?
Marine City Pool, the lifeguard's at Marine City Pool.
Okay.
For the swim programs that she offers.
That's what I want to see, is what it's for. I just want somebody not to think that we're putting lifeguards back down at the beach, okay?
Well, it's not summer, so I don't think she would be hiring in the middle of November for a summer of 2016.
Well, you never know what job people are looking for, so. Okay, Parks and Beach, I know you adjusted for the lighting. I didn't see any adjustment for the mule purchase, which wasn't in our original budget.
Again, it's going to, we used Park and Recreation.
I understand.
Okay, you know, can I just say something here? You're kind of picking at every little thing.
Well, I'm trying.
And there, we do one more budget for the year. I monitor it very closely. Elaine monitors it. Each department head monitors their budget, okay? You get financial statements every month. These are not supposed to be every little nitpicky thing that we do. When I do my budget amendments, and I've not done them any differently, I've done them as a general budget amendment, okay? We needed to find money to balance this budget without the P-33. That's what this whole budget amendment is all about.
A lot of this stuff is regarding the P-33, and as a commissioner, I have a right to ask the questions. That's all I'm doing. The salvage vehicles, I'm wondering too, I don't know if you can check it out. I noticed when that whole article came through on the, in the paper there, that I noticed we were the lowest ones, collecting only 10% of the issues, and everybody's going 20% to 25%. I don't know if that's something else we can look at to increase our input?
We can. It's, that fee is determined by the Secretary of State.
How come they're all?
We're only entitled to collect 10% of those fees.
How come the other cities were collecting more than that?
I don't know. Because I looked it up and I did research.
Okay.
It's in the right on the Secretary of State webpage.
And my understanding is from what they said is this stuff could only be used for vehicle theft programs. Yes, no?
To a point, yes. That money can be used for the deterrence and furtherance of investigation of auto thefts.
Okay. So we have to be careful how we use it for other things.
Or not use it.
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can purchase those four radios that I, you know, cut out of the capital.
Because you could say that it's part of.
Yes.
Okay.
Radio transmissions.
All right. Okay. So then when I get down to what we're leaving in, we purchased a mower. You haven't purchased that yet. You purchased a three-quarter truck. You purchased a new dump. And you purchased the mule, which came out of the rec department.
No.
Or not?
Yes. And we used Recreation Park millage money.
Okay. And I noticed a lot of your figures from the chief's stuff didn't line up with, it does line it up with the old budget.
He did not include the 72,000. He did not include the FICA Medicare.
No, no, and I'm not talking, no, I'm talking different figures. I'm talking his regular budget. Okay? All I'm saying is, as a commissioner, I have to try to make sure that we're on track. I understand that you do all these things, but I also have to understand where the money's coming from, what, where it's getting taken out. It's very difficult looking through this book because everything's buried. So it looks like we're still buying a lot of things, even though, you know. All right, that's all of mine.
The numbers work, so obviously, it was done correctly.
But I, I'm not saying it's not done correctly, but as a commissioner, I don't know. We hire people. I have no clue what they're making, what they're getting, what's replaced what, what's coming out of what. I mean, you know.
Okay, well, you know, as a commissioner, when these budgets are done, you're provided information, okay? As a board, you have, department heads, that the, that the city manager hires, and that you approve. Those department heads are in charge of their departments, and it's their responsibility to make sure that they fall within that. You, as a board, have, if they go over it, would have to have budget amendments done, and if you approve, if you did not approve it, then it's going to be the responsibility of that department head to worry about it.
All right. The last thing I have here is, I just want to remember that when we did the original budget, that we made the motion to suspend all capital improvement expenditures, including additional expenditures per city treasures list until the P-33 funding source is secured. We've already spent some of this stuff.
There were certain ones that we allowed to be spent, and we went over those, and those were the only ones that were spent. That information was provided to all the department heads when that was done, and I gave them their list that they could do, which was based on a list that I provided to the board when they approved the budget.
I understand, but that's not how the motion read when the budget was.
Well, the budget isn't the same as it was at, at the beginning of the budget. We've had savings and there's additional funds.
That's right. You can't, you can't figure anything out based on the sheets because I don't have any current sheets. I don't have a problem with you updating the budget and that, but I just like some current sheets so I know where the budget is.
Well, you get a financial statement every month that tells you where we're at. As far as giving you a final sheet, I can't do these budget amendments and give you a change on your financial statements until you approve them. And when you get your disresember report, it's going to have these changes in there.
I understand the process. And, you know, I don't think the majority of us want to micromanage the department heads.
Absolutely not. Nope. It's just questions, and you're entitled to question.
Nobody stopped you from asking your questions. Do we have anybody else?
Just glad I didn't get an answer.
She answered every one of your questions.
Not really.
What, she didn't say what you wanted to hear?
Well, it's all the hidden stuff that's buried in the budget so they could take money home in truckloads.
It's not hidden because the audit description is right in here.
You know, we just had an audit review and we have a treasurer that does an excellent job. And we were just presented with budget amendments that'll give us a balanced budget even after a severe decline in revenues. So, would somebody like to make a resolution, I mean a motion?
I'd make a motion that, I need to get that resolution number out, I'm sorry, that we go ahead and approve the resolution number 00342015 to amend the fiscal year 2015/16 budget to adjust for changes in anticipated revenues and expenditures.
Motion in support. Any further discussion? All right, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallon.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor's compared.
Yes. Thank you, Board. Moving on to item 12B, which is dispersments including payroll.
Make a motion to approve dispersments including payroll of $251,692.93.
Motion in support. Any discussion on dispersments? See none, roll call please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallon.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor's compared.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion hearing.
Moving on to item 12C, which is preliminary financial reports.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary financial statements for November 2015.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Except and filed. Onto our city manager's report.
All right. The statutory meeting of board review was Tuesday and everything went fine there. Ballot language was delivered to the county on Tuesday. The Vertons Hotel Project submittal, the application was turned over to MEDC. I'm meeting with the group next Tuesday to review that application. I met with a representative of the National League of Cities Line Warranty Program. What this is, is in essence, it's an insurance program for residents that covers water and sewer pipes that go from our infrastructure point to their house, which apparently tends to be a bit of a gap in insurance coverage. Homeowners' policies don't cover it and the city doesn't cover it. They're potentially looking for us to join as a participating community. In essence, what it would be is a support from Marine City that they could include our name in any literature that they mail out in the community. Little League started the construction of their restrooms over at the park. Unfortunately, they did place it in the wrong position. It was over the water line. They broke the water line. They repaired it at their cost and relocated it. In the future, they may be coming to you to make some modifications to the park there, potentially moving the berm and modifying the fields or something. I think they'll be working on a plan and maybe come here for a future meeting. Let's see, I contacted the attorney for some language in the process so that we can move forward with the ready-to-serv fees, exempting people with those lawn sprinklers from the ready-to-serv fees for sewer and water. So you can expect that in January. We had bid openings today for the dump truck Chevy and the Kawasaki mule, so that's been taken care of. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Simpson, what do you respond?
I didn't have much, but just to wish my fellow commissioners, folks here in attendance tonight and anyone at home, a very Merry Christmas. We've got a lot to be thankful in our city. We've had a very interesting year, a very busy year for us, and a lot of great things ahead for us. So I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a very prosperous 2016.
I also would like to wish the citizens of Marine City a joyous holiday period while we celebrate Christmas. I'd like to thank the work we just saw being done well by our city employees. And I would also like to indicate that we've done a very good job, the city has, with the promotion of the business district on Water Street. It's great to have what we have there and it's pretty well full. I think in the future, we ought to now start to spend a little time considering Broadway, Fairbanks, Parker, since it is all part of the city. Thank you.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and try to be safe. No drinking and driving. Don't forget, we have a public hearing on December 29th for Tiffa's Two and Three here at 7:00 PM. And then lastly, I want to thank everybody who's supported the Old News Boys and Girls. All of the volunteers worked really hard to make sure that no child goes without a Christmas. The Joe Dog and craft sale went great. We made 6,144 Joe Dogs. It was pretty amazing. We were doing 880 an hour. And I also want to do a special thanks to the HOH Motorcycle Group. Those are a great bunch of guys. They raised a lot of money for us, toys and bicycles. Dolly's Pizza and Anita's both had fundraisers for us and that helps us out a lot. And lastly, I want to thank the fire department for putting up with all of us because that's their usual night for training and they allow us to use the hall and have all the stuff for the kids here. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lovett.
Again, I want to reiterate what some of the other commissioners have said, what how great the downtown area is. The Maritime Christmas went fantastic. We had a great women's league tour, over 300 persons toured City Hall. Many thanks to the people who decorated that and put that together. The great job that our DPW has done with working with the Saw Grant and the information that you gave us tonight, our acting chief and cutting the budget and doing such a great job there. And certainly Mary Ellen, our treasurer, for the commendations she has received and the excellent job she has done getting the budget down to manageable. And I wish everyone a joyful and blessed Christmas.
Mayor Proton. Mr. Melli.
Yeah. Of course, I want to say again about having a Merry Christmas to everybody in town. And just want to say, food for thought. When you're involved with different organizations as to help out the needy, one thing or another, and every now and then you hear a testimony. And there was a person that came in with the Old News Boys and I was, it moved me where she made a comment, she was at the grocery store and she had all her groceries and she realized she didn't have her, her bank card with her. And of course, she was very panicking, where did she leave it? But meanwhile, she was very hurt and she wanted to bring back her groceries back to the aisle. And a gentleman came up to her and an older man, and he paid her groceries. And she came to the Old News Boys and she just turned around and said, "Look, I want to pay it forward because you never know what kind of circumstances you're in." I just want people to say, be noticeable. You know, nobody's going to come out to say they're in hardship or one thing or another, but just be noticeable. If, if you see a need, that's what makes a small community a joyous community to live in. And it, it did move me because she was in tears, she almost started to cry, but she, she held her compulsion, but it was just the, the idea about paying it forward. If you can do, if somebody gives you a good deed, if you're able to pass it to somebody else, it, it just makes a, a season, a joyful season. And you never know who you're going to be able to bless. And I just want to say again, have a Merry Christmas to everybody. And I hope everything comes for your joy, for your needs, and everything is taken care of, your bills, and, and you have a happy household and your finances and everybody. I like to just say a blessing to my people, my friends and relatives and my neighbors. I just, it's an honor to serve on the board. And I take it, I don't take it lightly. I want to do my job and I don't mind, if I did something wrong, if somebody comes up and tells me and they're concerned about something, feel free to call me. And I would definitely want to stand for you, for everybody, whoever I can stand for and bring a point across to the board. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Have a safe holiday. And Mary Ellen, excellent job. You've been watching our books and taking care of our money for a long time and that report just shows what excellent job you've been doing. And even, you know, for all these years, I know who's really keeping track of that and keeping us in line. And revenues declined again, as you can see that report, and we just keep cutting. Lieutenant Jim, acting police chief, I appreciate all the cuts you made in your budget. I don't know that they're all sustainable. I mean, police require a lot of training. I'm not really sure we could keep cutting things like that out of the budget, but maybe this year it was necessary. You need radios too. I mean, we need stuff. Can't just keep cutting. Mike, great job. This was an unusual year. I'm kind of glad to see it over. We had almost a complete turnover of all of our department heads. And our new hires are working out very well. I'm very happy, Elaine, with you and Merry Christmas. And I think next year's going to be a lot smoother and better for everybody. And Mike, I can't say enough about the job you do. And they, just one thing about Commissioner Avery, about what you said about us promoting Water Street. I don't think we promote Water Street. We haven't really been doing anything to promote Water Street. Water Street's kind of taken on a life of its own. The Maritime Christmas, which was a great success, was, actually promoted heavily and I think Mr. Coe's put in a lot of money to do that. And I think they tried to be as inclusive as possible, but what will happen is, as that fills up, the opportunities, they're going to want to continue. So it's going to spread and it's going to go to the rest of town. But if you look on Parker, there's been some nice changes. The Marine City Grill looks really nice. They put a lot of money in there. The corner grocery looks very nice. And I also like to thank Tiffa and our DPW for all the, you know, new, bright, energy-efficient Christmas decorations. I mean, the whole town's just sparkling. So we got bad things, we got challenges, but there's a lot of good things going on too. It's a great time being Marine City. If you, you could spend an entire day in, in our town and be totally entertained. So it's a good time to be here. With that, I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion to support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As adjourned.